For the February 27th, 2018 board meeting for the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors. Please join us for the last.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the individual with a ruling justice for all.
Thank you. And we are going to begin with our student presentation of the Hillsborough High School Mariachi.
Tonight is my pleasure to introduce the Hillsborough High School Mariachi Sangria Soul. Mariachi Sangria Soul is a curricular mariachi class offered at Hill High and open to students of all HSD high schools. When established, this mariachi class was the only course of mariachi offered in the Portland metro area. The group has grown to nearly thirty people and performs a wide variety of mariachi music at many events across the Washington County area. Please join me in welcoming Director Benjamin Neuss and the Mariachi Sangria Soul as they perform a few pieces for us tonight.
You're on your own.
Hi, I'm a mariachi sangria soul from Hillsborough High School. All those kids are from all around the district and they get passed in from Glendale and Liberty in the century. We're going to perform two songs for you. Our first song we'll be singing is "Volver, Volver", featuring Isaiah and Fernanda on the solo. Here we go. One, two, three, four, and one. Este amor apasionado, alrededor alrededor. Por volver, camino a la locura. Aunque todo me tortura, se quiere. Nos ha dado sediento, pero me acuerdo de verte. Tenías mucha razón, la casa, el corazón. Me puedo volver y volver, volver. La razón, este, yo se perder, yo se perder. Y volver, volver, volver. Nos ha dado sediento, pero me queda el momento de perder. Tenías mucha razón, la casa, el corazón. Me puedo volver y volver, volver.
Echole.
La razón, este, yo se perder, yo se perder. Y volver, volver, volver.
Alright, excuse me, Aida with Jesus and Daisy on the vocals singing the duet. This is Aida.
One, two, three, eh. Mariachi Sangria Soul. No queda nada entre tus ojos, se me muera el corazón. No deje de llorar, ya no vives el sol. Pero se acabe la mujer y las frutas de ella. Las canciones para llorar, y ahora me voy a emborrachar por ella, por ella. Y que me.
Ándale.
No importa cuál es el amor, yo lo que quiero es que ella. Y que se aparte de ella, quiere arribar hacia ella. Por la vida, por su amor. Que se acuerden que la vida nunca nada se olvida. Que recuerden que mi amor se lo entregué sin condición a ella, a ella.
Say que no, Lizbeth.
Y que me. Ven, llora mi amor, no importa cuál es el amor, yo lo que quiero es que ella. Y que se aparte de ella, quiere arribar hacia ella. Por la vida, por su amor. Que se acuerden que la vida nunca nada se olvida. Que recuerden que mi amor se lo entregué sin condición a ella, a ella.
Mariachi Sangria Soul.
Close up very quickly, we'll get a screenshot before we send you out. So, alright. One, two, three. I'll have somebody hide. Ready, one, two, three. Way to go, thank you. Alright, we now have a special recognition for Liberty High School's licensed staff. Here's a little test. And superintendent.
Well, that was awesome, I don't know if I'm gonna follow that.
So, the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors wants to recognize Emery Souza, Angelica Sumitski, and Tatiana Misa for their quick response to the council's lifesaving efforts in this emergency situation. Our superintendent will talk a little bit more about it.
I guess this is how you follow that. This is pretty special as well. So, I've talked to educators before about this whole idea that educators are in the business of saving lives. And typically when I talk about educators in the business of saving lives, it has to do with the influence that they have on students, their ability to impact and shape their futures in a positive way, their ability to help them make important decisions and create opportunities for them. Typically, that's what I'm talking about when I say that educators are in the business of saving lives. But every now and then we have circumstances that make us believe that educators are literally in the business of saving lives. And that's what we did to celebrate tonight. We want to celebrate some staff members who work to save the life of a student. We had a student, Quillen Franklin, who's here. He's agreed to say a few words when I'm done here. And he was playing basketball at lunch over at Liberty High School room and went into cardiac arrest. And Hillsborough Police Department Officer Henry Souza, who's been a student resource officer for, geez, as long as I can remember.
For eleven years now.
Eleven years now. So, he's been with the Hillsborough Police Department for a long time. He's been part of the Hillsborough School District community for a long time. And he noticed the commotion and went over, and went over his student and found him unresponsive and pale at the time. And Officer Souza immediately began chest compressions. And he was soon joined by Angelica Sumitski and Tatiana Misa, who assisted with CPR and administered shocks, not a big shock, with the AED. And they continued to care for Quillen until the fire department was there. When the Hillsborough Fire Department responded, Quillen's care was then transferred to them. And as I think about that, what that means for us as a community, that's exactly what we want to have happen. If we could draw up this scenario, that would be this scenario, that we have caring adults on site who are making a difference in the moment, and then transferring the care to some of those other first responders who show up. As a result of their efforts and as a result of the work they did to help Quillen in a moment of need, all of those folks, they're presented with a lifesaver award by the Hillsborough Fire Department and the City of Hillsborough. And to Emery, Angelica, and Tatiana, we want to thank you for the care you take for our students and for not hesitating and for the difference that you made. And thank you for keeping alive the hopes of Quillen and his family and ensuring that he has a very bright future. So, Quillen, would you like to come forward and say a few words?
I wanted to say thank you to Officer Souza, Nurse Angelica for saving my life. And you guys are awesome and really.
And you're back at school.
Very good.
Do you want to say a few words or?
I mean, you're standing up already.
I want to thank everybody, and I say this from the bottom of my heart. I'm at the end of my career as a police officer. I think I have maybe fourteen months left before I decide to retire. And I've been around a long time, as you can tell. And I decided, the last part of my career, was to help kids make better choices. And I think I've made an impact on some of those kids. We have sixteen hundred kids at Liberty High School and I've been there for my entire career. They're all going to be having a piece of my heart. The day I helped Quillen, the last thing I said when I was leaving that school, going to the hospital, was, "I never wanted to do that to one of my kids. I never wanted to rely on one of my kids." And they're my kids. And this really means a lot to me now that we hear about Florida. And I want to assure all the parents that they're going to have to go through me to get my kids. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. And Quillen knows it, Mr. Franklin, I'm there for the kids.
We just feel, I feel so lucky that we have such a great community that we work in and that we're all able to work as a team together to save the lives that day. And I think that's the number one thing, you know, signing up to be a nurse or a police officer is, that's why you do it. And so, I'm glad that we were there that day to do that.
Fourteen.
Alright. Ready, one, two, three, four. One more. Thank you. So now we have to follow that. That is definitely what we are. So let's just move right along. The first thing on our agenda is an approval of the agenda. So, we're in motion to approve the agenda. Do you want me to approve the agenda as printed? Okay. So it's been moved by Cam and seconded by Jackson to approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say may. And the agenda is approved. First thing on our agenda tonight is audience time. If you are interested in addressing the board, there are speaker cards at the back table that you can fill out and you can hand to Board Secretary Valabacna, who's sitting right here. She's got a nameplate. We currently have three speaker cards and two are in relation to a policy that comes up later in our agenda tonight, so we'll be inviting those folks up at that time. At this time, in just a second, I have to read a statement first, but Leah Odell, we'll invite you up to come and speak to us, but I have to read a really long thing first, so bear with me. Mentally prepared. So, public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent to speak card, which is available on the back table, and provide it to the board secretary. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Any person who is invited to speak by the board should, okay, I'm gonna, should state their name and if speaking for an organization, name the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of the group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, KLD, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. Thank you, okay, Leah. Now you're welcome to come up and join us.
Thank you. My name is Leah Odell. I'm here as a concerned parent. There is an increase in student acting out by many in general education classrooms throughout HSD's elementary schools. I've heard from teachers who are not comfortable speaking out in fear of losing their jobs and from parents representing many HSD elementary schools describing or witnessing repeated intense violent student behavior. HSD is currently allowing students who repeatedly cause room clears to continue in gym and classrooms while student data is being collected, which takes a significant amount of time, all the while exposing a multitude of students and staff to unsafe and stressful situations. A room clear occurs anytime a student threatens the safety of themselves and those around them. So when a teacher observes a student acting out aggressively, they must stop teaching and usher all students out of the classroom until a violent student can be managed. This process cuts into valuable instruction time, causes fear and anxiety, and students, is mentally exhausting for the adults involved, and does significant damage to the upset students' fragile social identity. I can only hope that our administrative leaders are working tirelessly to prevent room clears from occurring, especially more than once by the same student. Tonight I ask that two mandatory district procedures be highly considered. One, schools document room clears that submit data to the district. This is extremely important information that, to my understanding, is not currently being required to be documented. The administration should be very aware of how many of these traumatic incidences are occurring and what schools are being affected. Parents should also have access to these numbers in order to gauge the current atmosphere of their child's school. Also, with data available, clear goals can be made to significantly decrease the number of violent disturbances. Two, when a room clear occurs, parents are notified from the school by the end of the day. For many children, a room clear is a deeply distressing or disturbing experience, which is by definition trauma. It is definitely a parent's right to know that their child suffered a traumatic event while at school. We cannot expect that students are going to readily offer up an accurate account of what occurred during their school day. When parents are notified, they can have discussions and help their child process their emotions. Witnessed violence is a very serious issue and it's irresponsible to not inform parents. Ultimately, it should be the district's goal to restore safe and harmonious learning environments in all elementary schools by giving children with emotional and behavioral disorders the help they need immediately. Until that happens, gathering room cleared data seems like a no-brainer. Equally importantly, to navigate behavioral and emotional effects of witnessed violence, parents need transparency and clear communication from the school when a room clear occurs. Thank you for your time.
So, we are at six A on our agenda, reports and discussions with Beth and Dale with the district evaluation. You want me to start or you want to start?
My graduation rate's separate, so it's just.
Oh, sorry. One second.
I'm sorry.
With her speaker card.
Let me come back.
I may have the ability to move this around from up here. Or maybe not. Maybe I can just tell you what I'm watching. Okay, so we have, now have, the last piece of the puzzle as it relates to data from the 2016-17 school year, and that was provided to us when graduation rates came out in April-January. And we are now over eighty-four percent as a district, which is great. But, as you've seen for the last several years, we have compiled all of our relevant data points in this report of student achievement, and that has been, sorry, I just ran it here, provided for you in the packet. And once you guys have had a chance to take a look at this, we'll get it posted up on our website as well. So, it's just a eleven-by-seventeen sheet of paper and it's a really nice compact summary of some key data points from benchmark language arts, benchmark math, attendance, advanced coursework, academic extensions, graduation, and there's some metadata on the back that talks about how we've done in some of those key achievement areas. So it gives a nice snapshot. It's part of our, it's one of our three major pillars of the strategic plan, what we call our pre-part accountability system. Part one of which is the five-year strategic plan, the overarching plan that describes in general the goals for our district over a five-year span. Part two of that is the annual sports and work plan that we create every year. Part three is this report of actual student achievement. So, hopefully you all had a chance to take a look at that. And if you have questions, Dale or I can speak to that. The new piece of information that we have this year that you're seeing for the first time is our attempt to honor the request that came from the board to have a third evaluation tool, not just superintendent evaluation, not just the board evaluation, but a district evaluation. And instead of coming up with another voluminous report that would really be redundant and repetitive to things that we already have in great detail in various places on our website or contained already in different reports, we thought that it would be kind of nice to have another really accessible document where you could kind of take a look and get a sense of where the district is at in a number of areas. Not just student achievement data, but what are some points of pride? What are some different things that are going on with our budget, with our bond? You know, how we're approaching, how we're approaching some technology investments, different things like that. So, would love to hear your thoughts on this document and whether or not it fulfills what we were hoping that it would achieve, which is kind of a nice out-of-lance look at the district. Sorry.
I've always been thinking, you know, we've been talking about district roles for quite, for some time now, and I appreciate your efforts with. I love that this is easy to read. It has pieces we talked about that weren't specific to the school board or the superintendent. And I feel like it'll be easy to display and share to folks. So, thank you to you and your team for finding a way to package that all together. And one comment for Dale that, not for tonight, somewhere this year. I would love in the work session maybe to dig into data and not look at third grade, fifth grade, but track of cohort kids. So if I was reading this at an angle, it'd just open some new questions for me and so just earmark for another time.
Mark.
Again, yeah, I go, great job. On the student achievement portion down here, we only have three in thirteen of our grades depends above ninety percent. I thought, pretty, I mean, all the numbers seem very good except for maybe that one. Do we have an idea of, is it early, is it late? Where are we falling down in our attendance numbers overall?
High school, middle school, high school. That's where our challenge areas are.
And kindergarten.
And kindergarten.
That was, okay, that's what I was gonna wonder, right? Because we've talked about this a couple of times, of how starting that good habit in kindergarten can make all the difference in the world. So quite a bit of that is kindergarten?
Yeah, it's actually in the center portion here of this, of this chart. This shows the, well, this shows the average.
There we go, right.
Yeah, the key indicators of it. Yeah, and we have a really comprehensive attendance plan in line with the state's work around attendance and we have representatives sitting on that attendance work, so I'm happy to give a whole presentation about attendance too, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, but the case of ninety-four, it says we only have five at ninety percent or above, so.
I think we were actually, and we might need to go back and update this. I think we were starting to look at chronic attendance.
Yeah.
Which is not necessarily the inverse of grade attendance, which we can, we can spend more time on that picture. But chronically absent is what the state's gonna start looking at as a better indicator than average daily attendance.
Right.
I was just gonna say that it's, thank you for taking all of our comments and putting them in the future to implement and to be able to share also. The only comment I have is the markers at the bottom of the page or the check mark. It's clearly a reliable stat. There could be some, again, of a little, of a little symbol on it, so I didn't know if it was trying to call it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Seemed, seemed less jarring than a big red X.
No, it's fine.
We're developing. But yes, to describe it, yes.
Now, that might be all. That being special, as you know, is excellent, and I think it highlights kind of what we were hoping to get, so we will need to work on. All right.
Okay, I'm going to distract our normal program of events here for just a second until we hold on. Normally, we wouldn't do this, we got an intended to speak card right at the end of audience time that was submitted during audience time, but didn't make its way up until afterwards, so we'll call that, that person up, and then we'll, because it's not really for a policy later, and then we'll continue on with our regularly scheduled events. So I'd like to invite Dani Adzma up to speak with us, please.
Sorry, my poor voice is a little weird, I've got a cold. So hi, I'm Dani Adzma. I'm a freshman at Big Fiction High School. I want to talk about mental health today. So student mental health is an emergency that needs to be addressed in our district. In all forms, mental health issues can cause problems to students' personal education as well as group dynamics. Whether or not the issue presents itself as violence, isolation, or just outward distress, students deserve to feel supported. There have been amazing strides with our, in the district so far with mental health. And the trauma centers programs like PATS, classroom cooldown corners, wellness centers have done amazing things to help elementary students feel supported. We need to start focusing that same energy towards our middle school and high school students. Being a teen is hard for a lot of people, but some people need a bit of extra support. It's important that students know that they are loved and supported, and a lot of times they don't feel that, especially in secondary schools. We've had problems recently. I know that I was a middle schooler, and I was not so happy as a middle schooler. I don't think a lot of people were, but there, there's a lot of problems, and even students can recognize it, and there's not a lot of stuff in place for students to know how to report and help their classmates that they might know are at risk, or might know have worries and issues, and they don't know how to support that or get the help without thinking that they're gonna rat their friend out or get them in trouble in some ways. And it's important to know that students know how to get effective help for their classmates and how to get effective help for themselves, not just in students that they worry could harm themselves, but also students that could worry that could harm others, or just students that can need just a little bit extra love. I don't have much else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani. Okay, now, Don, come on up, please. We will move to six, new technology services, department overview, bond projects, update.
Excellent. Super excited to be here. Thank you for allowing me to come up. They don't let me out for a conference to speak to large groups, my technology, so I don't know what you want. I understand that momentarily, so thank you very much. I am here to do kind of a number of things. One, to kind of give an overview. As I look at this board, six of the seven members of the board are currently new from the last time I got to do a presentation, an overview of tech services. So I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of give a high-level overview of what this means for the district, and then talk about what the bond is going to mean to, to tech services, to technology in our buildings and in our district overall. So I've got three kind of overriding things that I plan to present. Basic district overview, what, what our projects are as they relate to the bond. There's a number of different projects, and they fall into two different buckets. And then kind of right now, the big three that will be the most visible and, and have some immediate impact in our buildings right away. So first, just a real quick, high-level view, overview of the district. We currently serve about 44 sites. Forty of them are student-focused, four of them are district-focused, transportation, AC facilities, that sort of thing. We have approximately 1,100 classrooms that we have, technology owner that we service. We have about 21,000 students currently and about 2,700 staff all told, not including the volunteers and the other people that come in. Currently, right now, in our district, we have about 22,000 devices. That was a bigger number than I had anticipated. And I'm gonna pop the numbers up here. My eyes are full now, so I can't read that far away, but it gives you a breakdown between Windows desktops, Windows laptops, Apple desktops, Apple laptops, iPads, and Chrome devices. This second number is the, the thing that may be important, and you've seen this, is the percentage of those devices that are beyond a five-year lifespan. And many of those, when you look at the Windows devices, are beyond a seven- to 12-year lifespan, which is one of the things we're going to address. That makes service and support challenging in older devices. I want to talk about the things that we do support. Right now, currently at an enterprise level, and when I talk enterprise level, that is an application, a program that supports all students, all staff, all operations in the district. We currently support 20-plus enterprise applications. Synergy being probably one of our primaries and infinite visions, our business, our ERP application, but Google Suite, Microsoft Office for email collaboration, a number of different things that we support there. In our department, we develop custom applications. We have a large data warehouse, one large data warehouses in the state. We do state reporting, those numbers that, that Beth shows with you on the reports, or some of the other reports comes, comes from our data warehouse, comes from our development team, they provide that information. We keep that longitudinally over a large number of years. And we've also built some custom applications that the district uses on a daily basis, along with a number of integrations that we developed to support data movement between two different applications. I'm very happy to report that today. After working for a year, we've gotten our bus routes to move from VersaTrans application and be available in Synergy, which is a big deal if you're in the schools and you don't have access to VersaTrans and those bus routes all the time. It's a complicated process to get updated nightly. Deborah just has seen that fruition with our development team, folks on phones. Enterprise computing, I, you've seen this, you've read all of these numbers. If you have questions, I'm not gonna read each bullet point here. There are some things that I do want to point out when we talk about these things. We talk about 27 physical servers. That seems like a lot of boxes. Those actually equate into, we use virtual services to pool those resources. So we actually have 187 servers that serve different purposes. We run everything in what's called an HA, or high availability environment, so that if DCA, a web server for DCA falls over, we have a second one that picks up the load, so we don't lose access to key, to key data and information. A large number of Microsoft SQL databases, we do, we support a massive amount, 125 terabytes currently of storage information for all of this infrastructure, and about seven terabytes of rotating data backups, so that we can make sure. We maintain here, and we have a target site over at Liberty High School. So in case this building burns down, we have backups at least far up. Unfortunately, both of them are still in the Hillsborough Airport flight path. That causes me a little bit of concern and sleepless nights at times, but there's not much we can do about that right now. We're working on that in our partnership with the ESD and other school districts. We have a network enterprise that, that supports, currently have 139 distribution facilities, a large number of wireless access points, a large number. The thing I want you to point out here is to remember the bandwidth that we're talking about, because that's gonna relate to a, a later slide where we talk about where we have choke points, where we have pain points, and how the bond's gonna help us with that. And if you consider the voice-over-IP phone system, each one of those 2,400 phones are like mini computers that we also support. Our desktop staff, all four of them, support all 44 sites, they, and 900 network vendors that we're focused on, on the network. They resolve and close about 7,000 tickets on average per year since I've been here. We have a training and documentation support, so people know how to get stuff, how to do things, how to do other things. In 2015-16, which was last, last year, I could get complete numbers, we did 166 trainings that 550 people attended face-to-face. We also provide a large number of them remotely, or through video programs, or through Google Classroom at the time of the school ag. And they also support 25 digital displays. So if you go into Hill High, and you see the digital displays there, or the ones right out front here in the office, there's 25 of those that they're supporting there. Tech purchasing, all tech-related purchases run through our department, so we can make sure we have standards that are supportable and maintain. Last year, over the last year, we did about 1,000 purchases, about 6.5 million, not just from our department, our budget's not that big, but that's the entire district as a whole. Our print shop and courier, they, they put out about almost 17 million impressions last year, from the last calendar year, and almost all of those are delivered by our courier, who goes out and runs half the district one day, and the other half the district the next day, delivers all the mail and everything else. We also have an assessment and reporting wing that, that helps train all of the test coordinators. Anybody who administers a test in the district is required by ODE to get trained and adhere to certain standards. There's 700 people that get trained by our folks. We provide 36 very specific in-person trainings, as well as online trainings to meet those goals. We provide support during all assessment windows, whether that's OPA, or S-PAC, or the candidate assessment. And then we also help with the completion of at least 86 different ODE reports. Many of those are broken out into multi-stage reports. ADM, for example, is, we do three to four times a year. This is all accomplished by 25.25 FTE. We have 200 administrators, 8.75 super techs, and 14 classified folks, and that's, that's kind of us right there. Just wanted to give you a picture, if you can. What's, I think what is, we're really excited about right now is what the bond's gonna afford us to do. And I included this quote from the bond packages, that the bond will update our schools to provide a modern educational environment, which would include technology labs and spaces for hands-on learning. One of the, I'm gonna talk about how it's broken out. There's $30.2 million of the $408 million bond that's dedicated towards technology. 14.3 is for classroom projects, and then 15.9 is dedicated towards infrastructure, which directly supports those classroom projects. We have to have the infrastructure to make sure things can work out in the buildings. Here's how they're broken down. I'm not gonna walk through all of them, but you will notice the three in red. I'm gonna go into a little bit more depth, the tech-enhanced classroom, the district fiber network, and then student computers, because we're woefully behind on where our student computers are at. So first thing I want to do is a little education about what a fiber network is. We've heard some things. Mike has done a stellar job in, in all of his coffee talks and in the prep up to a bond, but just want to talk about what this might mean for us. So when we look at this, this is a very simplistic drawing of the admin center at the middle of it. All of our schools currently come back here through Comcast fiber links, but it's bottlenecked through Comcast, and I'll show you that in a second. But if we were to re-provision a fiber network, many of our schools might have multiple paths back here, so that if and when a car hits a pole and takes some fiber out, this school, we necessarily, if this line broke, they could have another path to get back up at the admin center, and multiple paths possibly. We're gonna try and build as much redundancy as, as we can, if, as we move forward with the fiber project, or leasing fiber from another provider, but that kind of gives us an overview. And it gives us, those blue lines represent unlimited bandwidth. Right now, we pay our elementary schools, you'll see, our 200 meg's of connectivity for anywhere from 200 to almost 600 students in the building. And as we have more devices rolled into the net, bandwidth's getting pitched. We completed some of the wireless projects, and our, our elementary schools are saying the wireless isn't working, it's really slow, it's because we have limited bandwidth. Building our own fiber network means we'll start out at 10 gigabits between every building back to here, and at any time, if that's not enough bandwidth, all we have to do is change out some, some inexpensive fiber optics on each end, and move up to 40 gigs, or have 100 gigs, or whatever the next iteration comes. So that's what we're trying to get to. Our current state, why do we want to build a fiber network? If you look at this, if you look at just our four high schools, they each have a two-gig connection back to here, so that's eight gigabits of total bandwidth between those four. Four for our middle schools, an aggregate of 4.8 for our elementary schools, and 1.2 gigs for the rest of the others, other sites outside of the AC. Those all first have to go to Comcast before they come here. And Comcast, we only, right now, we can afford eight gigs from Comcast to here. Well, that's about not even half of what we currently need if everything were filled up, before we hit the AC and get up to the internet. If we get to a, to a, when we build our fiber network or when we have loose fiber, that goes away, so that eight gigs is not a constraint. We have essentially unlimited bandwidth, which provides opportunities for our folks in our buildings to do things. This is a potential map of what it might look like. You'll notice in the black rings is a ring that goes between our high schools, where many of the feeders connect, we're connected into. I'm kind of excited because we've been able to include Hillsborough Stadium and Hare Field in there, as well as the ESD, who's a big partner for us, so we can do that, and it gives us another alternative to the internet back there. We're allowing, we're currently out for bid right now on an RFP. We released an RFP on February 5th. It closes this Monday. I hope to be able to bring back a successful package for you guys in the March board meeting to improve, so we can start moving forward. If all goes well with that, we'll start in July 1, and then we're gonna travel back in time. Thanks, Jackie. And we'll have it completed by June 30. Actually, that's a typo, that according to Urate, we, we will have this done by July 30 of 2019, this, this one-year Urate cycle. So that's pretty exciting, and what it will offer up for the district. Student computers, we know we're woefully behind, we have a lot of aging computers out there, we know we, we needed to do something. So there was about $4 million, 4.2 to be exact, scheduled in the bond to, to replace and add additional student devices. I'm not sure why I keep hitting here, but right now, we're in phase one, we're almost complete. We've got two-thirds of them rolled out, 4,700 Chromebooks, five per high school, four per middle school, and between two and four per elementary school. We're looking at, we'll have about $2.9 million when that is complete, to look at what we're going to do. And what we want to make sure we do is that we are working in coordination with what's going on in our teaching and learning community, and what's going on in CTE, looking at curriculum adoptions that are coming up, so we can be strategic in how we provide additional devices. We want to make sure our classrooms and our teachers are ready for, for students with more devices, independent on that, so the instructions relative for them. And we want to make sure that the devices will be utilized when we, when we put more of them out there. So right now, we're in planning stages. We're looking at a language arts adoption that's coming our way, that that's gonna be a real easy fold in. How do we make language arts relevant, and how does the technology impact what we do with that? So that's coming. We're almost done with the 4,700 devices rolled out, I think. We have about 1,000 more that are on their way in before we roll out and be completely done. The tech-enhanced classroom is one that's been in the works for a really long time. We feel it's really important that it doesn't matter where a student is at in school, that they should have a baseline experience. And so we're rolling six bond projects, and we're called out by different pieces into one big project, which is including a teacher workstation on every, every classroom that's dedicated to that classroom, a mounted projector, voice amplification, a wireless display, so students can actually, if they have a device, can display without having to go hook out a cable to it, on the fly, a document camera, and a projection surface, like a screen like this. We're going with projectors, because many of our own classrooms are large enough that a 60-inch screen on an LCD monitors aren't big enough to be able to be seen at the back of the classroom. So we're looking for a 100-inch viewable surface and a 16-by-10 aspect ratio, so it can be viewed everywhere. One of the most important pieces of this is the voice amplification, because by itself, technology doesn't improve student scores, doesn't improve student learning. The only piece that, that shows, has research of just pure tech, not with instruction, is voice amplification. It helps a teacher, it saves their voice, it keeps their energy level up. Students don't feel like they're being yelled at when a teacher's having to raise their voice to get over 35 students, and everybody can hear. So we're really excited about that. This project is, is underway. We're starting at the secondaries. We're, we just ordered the first round of voice amplification for Glencoe High School and Century High School. We're gonna start that this month. We're hoping we end up with classrooms that look like this, because part of this is the rollout of flexible classroom furniture at the same time of class in the district. So that's gonna start at the elementary schools, and some of those targeted this month, next, in, in, in summer. But it will be awesome when, when it's all completed. We have tech-enhanced classroom across the district. So we're, we're looking to complete secondary by August before school comes back and finish the elementary schools over the course of the year, if we have summer. The one thing that I don't have slides for here, I've heard from two board members, one would have had questions about the date on the fiber, and the other had a question about cybersecurity. And security of our student and our staff data is very important, so I want to just address it a little bit with you all right now. We do take security very seriously. We feel like the first place we go to is how do we ensure our students' data is safe and secure, and that's the natural realm for a school district to do, is look at how do we protect that. We also want to make sure that we're working with our partners across the district to look at, how do we also make sure our staff across the district to look at, how do we also make sure our staff and the people that work for us feel like they're being secured, and that we're not having breaches of W2s. Central already had a breach this time last year, where W2s were released in the wild. We don't want to do that. So, we've done a number of things already. Four years ago, we completely redesigned our network, so that every single device that enters our network, whether it's plugged into the wall that we own, or whether it's a wireless device that many of you are using right now, are treated as hostile. We firewall all of our resources inside to protect from that. But we're also building training for our staff that we're starting to roll out, and will become part of the mandatory training next year, about what PII looks like, what directory information is, how to protect that. We've been working with staff on training on what phishing is, how to protect against phishing attempts, who to ask, making sure we're doing that. And we're starting, and we started already, sending out multi-factor, or, excuse me, multi-factor authentication. So if you're a staff member, make it so that you have to confirm pre-watch, you log into your email, we're starting with email. You have to get a text to say, "Yep, this is me. Here's my code," before you can get into the email system. Do that. We're looking at any applications we can do, we're going to be requiring multi-factor authentication for our staff. So, that's all the words I was designed to think. I'm close.
Yeah, some questions for you.
I would hope there'd be some questions.
My question's been on the night she got the answer, and I, yeah. So, there's money that's left over for student computers. They come out of phase two. Does it literally have to be devices, or in some content areas, industrial arts, performing arts, those places where maybe they don't need Chromebooks, but they need more modern pieces of technology to, in welding, or whichever, or any of those places? Do they use those, those computer or technology devices in other areas?
It doesn't have to, it doesn't, one of the things I want to make sure is, we just removed, in preparation for the forty-seven-hundred devices, Chromebook devices, we've left five-hundred-and-ten. We've got special labs. We call them special labs, because they run hard, our software that can't be run through a Chromebook, whether it's Photoshop, or whether it's a CAD program, or CNC routing program, and things like that. We've left those behind, even though they need to come out. We have to address those as well. That's going to be part of this. It's a smaller sliver. And we can look at that. It can also be used for training, for teacher preparation, and how we do professional development for our folks as well. So, we're looking at that. I'm giving, what I'm doing is, I'm giving a list of other asks that we've said, and I've heard Adam, and I've heard it very well, is that we're going to do everything in the bond that we said we're going to do. And then anything additional, if we have savings, which I certainly will, we'll look at those other projects. I've had a couple of high schools already say, "Hey, our theater, we have a projector, we don't have a projector, we don't have a screen." That's an issue for us. We may be able to have some of that savings and some money for that. We have money in there for elementary school gymnasium AV, because not all of our elementary schools have a set system with a projector in there. But we're building some new gyms, and those construction funds may cover those pieces, so that might be something. So, we'll adjust as we move through, and do what makes sense for all of our students, yeah.
Thanks. I would just like to say, as somebody who's owned a technology company, you should be commended for what you're able to accomplish with twenty-five people. It's kind of amazing. When you look at all of what we do, you and your staff should be commended for doing a great job. For the, for the community, I've been fortunate enough to be tasked with being on the technology advisory committee, so we're meeting monthly, or every other month, stuff like that. And it's tremendous, because it's staff, it's teachers, it's administrators, all coming together with a single focus of how can we use technology to make the experience better for kids, for our students. So, know that in the background, you know, Don's great comp meter on top of like a duck, he's kind of in that crazy underdose. So, a couple of quick questions. A hundred-and-five SQL databases. Is that all sort of district use, or is that like, do we allow classes to spin up a SQL?
No, that's, that's all enterprise. That's all. So, and that's production and test and development. So that's, that's not all. But it's about two-thirds. Two-thirds of those are production.
Okay.
But again, part of that is, we're at HA environments, and we have two SQL farms. So, we're mirroring some of those databases.
Sorry, that's the door stuff. But, oh, the last question is, why Hope Rose City?
Because we do our graduations there, we do lots of other events there. It's not that far out of the way. It's going to be pretty inexpensive run, and sort of half-bandwidth there.
I get that. So is the bandwidth we provide going to be just for us when we're having a football game or graduation there, or is it going to be mirrored with what the parks recreation departments already provide?
We can do both. So we can turn it off, when we have an event there, we can just say, "Okay." Or it will be nice for us to just, "Hey, there's fiber there. We've got graduation here. Here's where we're going to spring out, and we know that it's going to be a secure environment." Chances are, we're not going to be saying, "Hey." But our city of Hillsborough has such been, been such a great partner with us. I think there's ways that we can, we can figure out and make that a valuable resource on both sides of that. I do have to say back to your first comment about me doing this. I wanted to take that opportunity to plug the staff that we do have, because I have Deborah Giles and Tom Luba sitting back there, and Devin, who is here almost all the time. They're the ones, I'm going to be the one that comes up here and talks about it. These are the folks that make it done, and I could not do that without the incredible folks that I have, and without Deborah and Tom's leadership. They're incredible.
Mark, I just wanted to mention one more thing about Hillsborough's statement. That's also the place where we do our reunification preparing, in the event that there was some emergency and we need to relocate students to be picked up elsewhere. That's, that's the location that we do.
Yeah. It's more just curiosity. It's going to be on all the time, or is that like, get out?
I have a question, just please clarification for my curiosity. How many Chromebooks fit in carts?
How many? Well, for this rollout, we're buying carts that seat forty Chromebooks. We can get varying sizes of carts, but right now, we're getting forty.
Okay. And the tech-enhanced classroom?
Mm-hmm.
Is that every classroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, now we do, great work.
Yes.
Graduation power, right? Good luck.
Thank you.
So last time we spoke about graduation rates, it was a couple days before the year could be released. So it was this very dodgy week, a presentation. So I'm happy to be able to speed up from today. So, as you know, our graduation rate for our district as of last June was eighty-four-point-one percent. I think for the first time, I've been able to find that every school was above eighty percent. So we're really excited about that number. It's a substantial growth over last year, and we can continue to see upward trends. So that's exciting news. One of the data points, however, that we continue to track is, not only do we have our grad rate for regular and modified diplomas, but we also have our cohort completer rate, which includes those students who are receiving a GED or an alternate certificate. So, we want to make sure all of our kids have pathways onto college and career, and sometimes those look a little different. And of course, we definitely want to support that four-year grad rate, but we are very pleased with our students being able to move on in their educational pursuits. We also have students that aren't represented here, that are continuing enrollment. Our schools should be commended for the continued work they do to reengage students who may need a fifth year to graduate, or they may need to be invited back for a fifth year. So we have quite a few students that are taking opportunities that aren't representing in this data. We had a total of a hundred-and-twenty-seven non-completers, and I can attest to the fact that we know every one of them. We know their stories, we know their names, we know where they live. We've probably sat in their living rooms, and we continue to reach out to them. That number continues to decrease, and we definitely contribute our district-wide effort in sharing those students that are on the ten-day drop, and I can say that it's been a district-wide effort to reach out to them, engage them and their families, and try to include them back into our schools and provide opportunity. We also continue to focus on our students, who historically we have underserved. We saw growth in both our Hispanic Latino population for graduates, as well as our students with disabilities, which tend to be an area that we haven't served as well, but we're seeing growth, so we're really pleased with that. As we look into the future, I could probably talk for hours on this, but specifically this year, one of the things that's been wonderful is just the continued conversation with our high schools about what is and isn't working, and sharing those practices, and knowing our kids so well that they're telling us what has and hasn't worked for them. So, that gives us some areas to focus on. So, definitely continuing with that high-quality instruction in our system, K-12, for the first time, we're really focused on the same thing, which is purpose engagement and assessment, and specifically looking at language, the language scaffolds, the academic language that we know all students need for their college-and-care pathways, and just rigorous tasks. So, language and rigor, we hear it over and over and over. We continue to monitor our students. Really thankful for the tech department. Not only do they do all that, but they also respond to the requests of our schools, and the needs to continue to improve our data system. DCA is a fabulous system, and Deborah and Tom, in particular, have done a lot of work around putting pieces in there, so we can pull out information about kids being connected. We want to know our kids by name, strength, and need, so we continue to add pieces into that system, so that we can know our kids even better. Relationships continue to be a focus. As you know, we added wellness counselors in all of our high schools this year with Measure Ninety-Eight money, and we're piloting wellness centers. Like, we have an elementary, one at Century, and one at South Meadows. So, giving our students support. Freshmen continue to be a focus. The data's pretty clear from the Chicago study from years ago, that if our kids are on track in ninth grade, then they are, have a better prediction of being able to graduate. So we're working with our Northwest Regional ESD and University of Oregon's Critical Issues Ninth Grade On Track, and Hill High has been a key focus group that has been working on that. But we have all of our high schools participating in those conversations, sharing those practices. Again, math has been a barrier. We use some of those ninety-eight funds to really support math instruction. Got some amazing things going on, lots of daily opportunities for math, some wonderful PD that we've been having in our middle and high schools to articulate that, that is articulated with elementary. And we're doing some amazing things with our options teachers in our high schools. There's a lot of collaboration, and really thinking about what are the various options for kids who might not be in defining success in specific class, or may need a little bit extra attention in those comprehensive schools. And then, as you know, as you continue to approve different courses and different programs of study, we continue to focus on those college-and-care paths, because we know if we can connect to kids' natural interests and connect them into school, that then we won't have to stink and graduate on time. So, doing a lot of great work. Really excited about the work that's happening, and we predict that number will continue to go up. Questions for me?
You mentioned the sort of ninth grade being a key indicator.
Yeah.
Do we, do we, do we see a correlation in that data? Do we see this graduated class that was just over eighty-four and whatever, right? We saw them being on track in that grade?
Yes.
That little page there?
Yeah. Actually, our, our ninth graders, our graduation rate is a little bit higher than where they were in ninth grade, so we're really pleased with that. But we monitor that ninth grade data point, just so that, as we move our students through the future, that we have even greater, higher graduation rates.
You can follow the trend of that, of they've met the credits.
Yeah.
In ninth grade, it's almost exactly the same if you go back over the years.
Yeah.
Can almost give you a prediction of where.
Yeah. One of the, one of the DCA points that we're really pleased with, Tom's been working with that team from Hill High with the, and the critical issues and the Northwest Regional ESD work, and has created a ninth grade on-track indicator tool, so that it's easy to pull data before we have to do a lot of, you know, hand-crunching. But based on those practices from that study, he's been able to create a tool that is being used in our high schools. So, just another really good example of kind of a whole-system support around what matters most for our kids.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We are going to move on to the early learning partnership report with Olga Kelly. Your suggestion.
Good evening. My name is Olga Kunian, and as a master of early learning, and we have a couple of programs that we see here, and telling a lot of stories about how we went from running a half-day preschool program to now a eight-week, full-day, full-blown preschool site in our district. But I thought I'd give you a quick interview from our experts tonight, so I brought along Kelly Torey. She is a TOSSA in our district from First and Goodwood, and she maybe told you a little more about how we are redesigning our public education system, so it can become a true preschool twenty-one system. So, there's some great stuff to share with you tonight about our preschool programs in our district, and then we will be there, well, after work. Do you have any questions that you may have?
Thank you, Olga. All right. So, we are working in conjunction and collaboration with the Early Learning Washington County, and so as a group, our goals are to create an early learning system that's coordinated and effective, ensures that children arrive at school ready to succeed, and that children are living in a stable and healthy family. I'll quote here for you, because I think it sets the tone for why we're doing what we're doing with early learning. The most important period of life is not the age of university studies, but the first one, the period from birth to the age of six. And for those of you who have known that I also work with career and college pathways, it starts early, and we need to focus on our young children to help make sure that they are ready to learn, and that they're ready to be contributing citizens as they grow older.
We have developed an early learning team in the Hillsborough School District, Olga, and Robin Barbernow wasn't able to be here tonight, but she's our early learning coordinator. And then Kelly and myself as early learning TOSSAs. We also work with Christina Dorotea and Luciana, who are family resource managers, and together, we are creating an early learning team and doing the work.
So, how this all started is with this visionary right here, Olga Kunian, three, two-and-a-half years ago, getting together with partners. And so as you can see up here, we have, the Hillsborough Early Learning Team is made up of Community Action, Head Start, United Way, Lightworks Northwest, Early Learning Washington County, Department of Library Services, Adalberto Perez, OCBC, and then most recently, the ESD. We're working in conjunction with them to open another preschool next year to serve our special-needs students.
All right. Some of the main key points that the early learning team is working on this year, and part started last year, is we developed an early learning fair that we work with, we offer in the fall, for zero-to-six-year-olds is our target age group, and the community partners from around the community come, and families are invited for that day, and typically it's been housed at Lincoln Street Elementary. We also do two kindergarten fairs. We offer one kind of on the east side of Hillsborough, and on the west side, one's at Lincoln Street, and one's at Witch Hazel. Both fairs are identical. We hope to have same partners at both events. And that is targeting for our incoming kindergarten students, and also several community partners come to that. We found out we're going to have a fire engine there for an hour for students to see, and dental, dental booth, as well as we're inviting all of our schools to host a booth, so that families can come and learn about the different offerings of the different schools that we have throughout the district, and then other resources that the school district and the community provide to families that are coming into our schools. We also, part of the early learning team is, we've been working on developing professional development. We're currently working with the Tiger, Tiger, Twelveton School District, and Beaverton School District, to do a childcare symposium that will be in May, and that will be open to all preschool providers and childcare professionals. We also are doing a summer summit that is preschool and kindergarten, as well as the partners on the early learning team. We have, in the fall and in the spring, we have kindergarten and preschool teacher PLCs, where we bring all of our kindergarten teachers and preschool teachers throughout the district together for a day of professional development, learning, and collaboration. And we also are developing and piloting this year a summer bridge program for students who have been in preschool, or have maybe not attended preschool, but will be attending kindergarten. We'll be piloting at McKinney Elementary, for twenty students to be able to come for two weeks of a summer school, where the preschool teachers will be working with the kindergarten teachers to deliver the instruction for those two weeks. So if those students have been with the preschool teacher, they already have a relationship with their families, and they can bridge that relationship to our kindergarten teachers and welcome them into kindergarten. And then, in order to drive our team and the work that we're doing in Hillsborough with early learning, is we have early learning is we have looked at the State of Washington preschool through third-grade framework and we chose the three bucket areas of focus for this year would be teacher effectiveness, instructional tools, and continuity of pathways. And so, once a month when our team comes together with the partners throughout the district as well as our early learning team mentioned in the slide before, we are focusing our work around those three areas and that's what's driven the choices that I shared with you earlier.
So, as Kirsten mentioned, we're working on some buckets of work and with our big group of partners, we've come together once a month and they're really the decision makers that drive our work that we do. But we also have the rest of these partners that are the specific partners that we have preschool classrooms with at our elementary schools. What Olga worked originally with Adalantia Perez to do the kindergarten partnership, innovative partnership grant, three years ago, to start at McKinney Elementary School is kind of the basis for all of this work. And then from there, she was able to innovate again and get a grant for preschool promise, which started at, we have a preschool that we run strictly at Reba Elementary School. And from there, she's developed some MOUs with our other partners so that the students who are going to these preschools are actually our catchment children and so they will be going directly into those kindergarten programs at that elementary school. And Kirsten had mentioned that we are doing professional development with our kindergarten teachers and preschool teachers. It's been interesting because we had to cross collaborate with what's being offered at Community Action, what are we offering for the Hillsborough School District and making sure we're all speaking the same language in regards to curriculum, assessment, and our relationship with children. This has actually helped at some of the schools, the students are getting the information from their teachers as they're collaborating together in their professional learning communities.
Currently, we have some established partnerships and then we also have additional sites throughout the district. We right now, out of 10 of our title schools, all, one is, we have eight elementary schools and one high school with preschools in them and one non-title school has an elementary, has a preschool in it as well. And with our grading of the funds, we've been able to establish the partnerships and optimize our resources and funding. And then we also have additional sites that are in conjunction with the Hillsborough School District but not directly related to the early learning team and that's in three elementary schools, one middle school, and three high schools.
So, our goal is to make sure that we're serving our needed families and children who would not necessarily be able to access preschools that are really expensive to go to for a full day. And so, Olga's been really innovative in grading funds, preschool promise funds to Title One migrant education funds, some general funds and at the high school level, at Liberty High School, we're utilizing Perkins money, Paprey money, Measure 98 money, as well as Title One funds. We have five schools serving children who would be going to that feeder elementary school. So, along those lines, the district, because of this partnership, provides a lot of oversight and support since we are housing these preschools at the elementary schools, meals, nursing, care team, professional development, outreach with family resource managers. One of the goals that we've had is to make sure we're not duplicating services so that collaboration has been really important because a lot of these community partners have family resource managers and do give service to their, their families. And so, our family resource managers, Christina, Luciana, and Dorotea work really hard to make sure that the services are wrapped around, that not redundant. Our agencies make sure that we are always looking at things with a lens of equity, especially with dual language programs. All of our elementary schools that the preschools are in are dual language and so our preschools are dual language preschools. Only have, 99% of them are dual language preschools, we're working on the other 1%. There are a lot of site benefits. We've heard this from, I had a video of kindergarten teachers talking about this for Reba, but we just didn't have enough time for that. But what they're finding is that there's a lot of community, a sense of community between the preschool students, the parents, and teachers. There's collaboration now. Originally, the teachers didn't even know there were preschool classrooms at their sites. And so, now there's open communication. Kirsten has been working on site visits and just making relationships with those preschool classrooms and helping make sure that they're part of the culture of the school. Bridging professional development, there's a lot of, well, in preschool, all they do is play. Yes, they play, but it's inquiry-based and it's learning. And so, now the K-12 system is learning about early learning and early learning is learning about the K-12 system. We're strengthening our communication and we're also helping families understand the K-12 system because what traditionally happens with early learning is there's what we call the K-12 cliff where families are really involved in early learning and then they come to the K-12 system and don't really understand how to navigate it. And that's one benefit is families are understanding how to navigate our system. In addition, recent studies show that bilingualism relates to greater cognitive flexibility, greater problem-solving skills, and increased creativity and that is one of the reasons we're focusing on having dual language preschools.
And then, as Kelly mentioned, part of my role is bridging between the preschools and the kindergarten teams and helping them to build a collaborative relationship and to also have the preschools feel included in our school system and working with principals and the preschool partner, community partners, as well as with the Hillsborough School District partners for early learning to make sure that these are being met for preschool students with in our buildings and helping them to be a part of the school community from when they enter in preschool, being invited to evening events at the school, being included if there happens to be a break in the gym time for preschool going to use the gym so the students are used to the building and the resources that the schools have to offer and interacting with families. And then I talked a little bit earlier about our Kindergarten Bridge program for the two-week summer school. We also, in addition to that, know that not everybody will be able to come to summer school because of schedules or availability. We're also offering two evening events in April and May for at McKinney and also every bill actually to, as part of the bridge pilot, to bring families into the schools where kindergarten and preschool teachers will be present together and will be having a family engagement activity with them. So, we're really excited about that to get them into the building and start learning about the culture in the school system.
Time for questions.
We do. I'm trying to remember what it's been. I have some comments to ask, maybe a question because I don't have to be honest today. One, this is super exciting as a parent of kids who are in their late teens and twenties, preschool used to exist in Hillsborough School District 20, 25 years ago and it went away and I still, and still that it came back. I could talk about early education all night, so I will try to be hard not to. I do believe it is why both of my children were successful students through their entire career. Do we still have any partnership with PSU and the Home Board and Center? We, I visited Reba last year and this year we visited Liberty and so there, I know they're using a lot of the same approach and that's a million and I'm curious if there's a formal partnership?
We don't currently have a formal partnership like them, but on the high school programs, though I, that's what I taught, is that early learning is in my blood, it's my passion. And the high school teachers all have connection with PSU, but not all of our preschool programs do. However, a lot of the, through childcare resource and referral, a lot of the professional development, it goes through PSU. So, there's a lot of that training through the, through this year.
When I went in and visited Reba, I think the one piece that I took away from is it very much felt the cooperative preschool. The parents were engaged in what was happening there, not only, I think what I learned, which was my own experience of having little kids in that, was you were teaching them how to be parent advocates and education advocates. They were feeling very welcome in that community and finding their voice and were really interested to, when they realized it was I was a board member, to tell me everything that they as a parent were learning and the differences they were observing in their children and how they're not at preschool. So, my final question, again, you haven't answered yet, is is there an opportunity as we grow our preschool programs at the high school level to actually provide preschools that our two uncles can pay, send their children to? Like Liberty is a very development and incorporate high-quality preschool program. Will we ever break that place?
All four high schools, all four comprehensive high schools have tuition-based preschools that are learning lab preschools, so the high school students are happily become educators, that's what they want to do. I'm working with Liberty, Century is most likely because of the bonds. Our facilities won't be up to muster for licensing and a full day and so I'm working with Century as the next possible, we should do a full-day preschool, that's at the high school. But the students there are not all catchment area, students were that, some are, some aren't, it just depends. A lot of the high school families been attending and word of mouth marketing for those programs, but we're in the works there. And in regards to the families, that's part of the early learning philosophy is families are the first teachers and the most important, so we love it.
Thank you. Jen?
Kind of along with what Kim asked, so the high school preschool programs, who attends those? The elementary, it was, you know, they feed into that school, but when you get to the high school level, there was a middle school listed as an additional site. Who goes to those?
So, the middle school sites are, we have, our partners are renting the space from those middle school sites and we're in the works of trying to be a more collaborative type of relationship with them. We're focusing first on the locations in the elementary schools. The high school programs are different because they're CTE programs, so they're the group of technical education programs and so they're open to the public, they're tuition-based, whereas the other programs are, there's no fee attached to those preschools. The high school programs only run half-day and they're considered license exempt because of being in the high school classroom. There are also learning lab preschools, so the high school students themselves go through the training to be high school, to be elementary teachers or early learning teachers and so they're working hand-in-hand with those preschool children, creating curriculum, assessment, lessons, and leading in the preschool as they get to be juniors and seniors. So, anybody who is able to get in before they close their registration can actually access those preschools. They don't actually, none of them advertise because it's always been word of mouth. For instance, I used to run the preschool program at Hillsborough High School and I never once in 15 years advertised. It was, people would call me asking, when is your registration happening? And I was full, I'd refer them to the other high school programs. It's offensive to the public.
That's a great opportunity for students.
Yes.
So, a comment and a question. The comment is, my daughter, the preschool is helping to be involved in and such an opportunity for the kids to start the education in that career pathway. And the other thing was, you mentioned a partnership with Community Action, which is a preschool and the schools were on the same page and I was wondering if there's also a partnership with the classroom management department and the school could also have a preschool and if you look for that or even the facility.
We don't yet have a partnership with them, but we are, rather than exploring some other opportunities. We do want to grow the program, so as we meet new partners, we're asking, what is your commitment to the early education and how can we begin to create those pathways? So, we're, we are in our third year of this work and we have, we have a lot to learn and we're very excited in the near, so we are looking forward to growing the program and this is the first site.
Kirsten and Kelly, this is awesome. I just wanted you to know you have a fan in me and I probably all, but I just wanted to say it, this is amazing work. At the Fall Oregon School Board Association Conference, OSBA, there was a lot of workshops on this and they're doing some really pioneering things around the state, like you mentioned the early engagement with families and there was a whole workshop on, they build these little backpack, they're like early reading bill kits and they invite families in, they give away, they give hundreds of these things away. You get the families into the school as a family and you give them some resources for early reading. This is, this is magic, the leveraging of this, this head start on this, this reading proficiency and it's a two for you, get families engaged, this would win on a lot of levels. Maybe give the bill kit to a little child who's three, but his two-year-old, you know, sister catches it in two years. So, it's win-win-win. I think strategically, if you look at how do we go from the mid-eighties graduation rate to the mid-nineties, this is a whole area of endeavor that may, may be what it takes to really get where we need to be as a district in terms of graduation rates and look how far in advance we have to think about that. We have to think the entire K-12 experience in advance to get the outcome that we want, you know, that many years later. I really think that that's true. I'm a facility manager and so my thoughts are thinking about purpose-built rooms and facilities for this and we really go from an idea to implementation district-wide. There's probably a facility piece of this because these are physically smaller kids and there's just a lot different about, you know, early education in terms of the infrastructure. So, I would ask you to, to challenge Justice's Board to find out how we can give the, the resources that you need in terms of infrastructure.
For sure.
Good.
Olga already has her fingers in the box with the new schools will be built, so they'll all have a preschool room, at least one room for those schools, so hold them on it.
Is there a comment about these GOAT packs, these little backpacks as giveaways?
We kind of have started that at the kindergarten fairs and at the early learning fairs, in fact, I just am giving a sample tomorrow, the mail of the bag that will be put together and it's going to have our common HSD goal of know every name, or their student writing, strength, and need in both Spanish and English. And in those will be laminated card stock that will be like a dry erase for students to be practicing writing their name. We'd love to buy them all white ones, but we're not quite there yet. And there'll be family resources and pencils and crayons and stuff like that. We even talked about scissors today and I'm going to be proud of this. So, so we're starting to go on that. It might not be up to the level, but we've seen other school districts use, but we'd love to get there.
I can say there was one district in Oregon and they started the program, it was actually in Eastern Oregon, it was a very remote district and they, they drove the cost down year over year. It was like 150 bucks per kit the first year and then they drove it down to like 65 bucks per kit and the quality of the kit actually improved. Instead of buying a kit in kit form, they would buy and get deals on all the components and then they would get volunteers to assemble them and they, they really practiced coding on how to do it and they would give their money by the time it was, so good luck.
And Mark?
Yeah, just echoing with everybody, I mean, I think Martin's under percent correct, this is how we really improve graduation rates long-term and I, and I knew we were doing a lot, but I really appreciate, thank you guys for coming here and giving us a comprehensive overview of what we are doing and giving us a sort of glimpse of what we should be doing and where we're heading. One question I have is that in your slide deck, you mentioned one high school, I'm guessing that's Liberty, so I wondered if you could explain a little bit of how what we're doing in Miller fits into the equation.
With Miller?
Yeah.
Well, right now, Miller Education Center, they have their teen parent program and so we're trying to, that's one area that we're trying to work with in our Hillsborough Early Learning Team is to bring in our teen parent programs to make sure that the parents, the children there are getting the same type of background knowledge about how to work with children and how to help their children with career and college pathways in themselves. But we don't have, there are infant toddler programs there at Miller Education Center, it's not a preschool for most of the aged children that are there and so it's a little bit different and they're not completely at capacity, so their area, this area we're working on. I do want to say something about synergy. We will be tracking data, so you can ask us in a couple of years how the kids are at because all our preschool children are in synergy, so we can, yeah.
Thanks to our technology department.
To track the data of following the children who did go to preschool and where they're at for a great bunch of, so.
Thank you. I think those are all the questions. My daughter, Willie, starts center next year and we want to put them to the kindergarten fair on our calendar day. She's very excited, so we'll see you there.
It's going to be fun.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, we are ready for the financial report.
Yes, we have the financial report. It was in the packet. I'm going to go ahead and assume that you guys have read through it and there's an update on our continuing work with the Center for Educational Leadership. What we're doing is operational staff to support principals and instructional leaders. A little bit about the transitions that are happening in the business office right now and there's the most recent workers conference and student reports that we have available. Again, it's a one-month lag time in those, we're going to move this back and that's so that the information you learn about those situations over a couple of weeks has time to settle before they end the report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
There might be a question more for Dale or Travis, but it's in this section, so the, the students' report seem to be flat or, or down and saw a big jump in December. Is that, do we know if that's elementary, like what our guest speaker was talking, what our audience time speaker was talking? Do we have an idea of this uptick in student incident reports, where, where the problems are?
We know that it's K-2.
Okay, thank you.
I'll point out too that it was lower in November, so I think some of it's just timing.
Yeah, we have been trending lower. We have been trending flat or lower, pretty like, pretty substantially, like a couple here, a couple there, and then trending lower mostly. And this is just the first time we've seen a big jump, so it's kind of trying to figure out what happened.
I think, I think like you thought I might as well, but.
Maybe it's board update or something, I just, I'd love to know why the anomaly, if it's null.
Jen?
I need to follow up on that. I remember we changed the way we were tracking student incidents. When did, when did we change that? And would that have had an effect on us?
Erica, we started with that two years ago.
Yeah, that was earlier.
It was, okay.
We have to talk to Casey, there's more details.
I don't think that would be the impact that we're looking for with your, just in like March, December, so I will check with that on for you guys.
Yeah, I understand that that's the, why sixteen, seventeen was higher. Was that because we changed the way we're tracking? So, now we're dealing with apples and apples in it.
Okay, we are going to do first readings of several policies. And just as a reminder, policies that are scheduled for first reading are included in the board meeting packet, so board members review those and can ask staff members questions ahead of the board meeting on a one-on-one basis. Staff members will not formally present policies for first reading unless the board requests information that is not already included in the board meeting packet. That's just your reminder for folks. And we'll start with comment, policy AC and ACAR.
So, I have received some feedback from Erica and Martin and then we've had some correspondence via email and some of the things I'm gonna have to follow up, have to get more initial information, but I think there was something that Erica wanted to share tonight so that we can follow up.
So, I think that's what anyone, I'm a policy, the first one, AC, I wanted to reply that there was additional language added to that one that also includes protection from discrimination against individuals based on their citizenship or immigration status or based on their national origin or perceived national origin. So, there's a way that we can include that language in our discrimination, our anti-discrimination policy.
We'll have to follow up on, on that. I think that's the one.
All right, that makes me think also of gender identity. All right.
Just a curiosity question, the path for escalation seems pretty clear in the discrimination plan procedure, step one to four. Step four is at the board level and says, it is something about presentation, that's regular board meeting. Is that executive session? Is that open session? Like a meeting with, with people who have a complaint?
Typically, that would be in an executive session, but.
Okay. I was hoping, so it's not spelled out there, but I was, I guess I just assumed it would happen.
It depends on the nature of the complaint.
Right.
Okay. So, there are some complaints we could handle in an open session and make some statements and the, would be done in a, okay.
Correct, and we have some discretion for that.
Okay.
All right. You just keep going.
Oh, keep going.
You're on second page, so I said one, but then you just, you just go to your end.
So, are there any questions on staff complaints, GBM? How about GBMA whistleblower? And then, there have been some questions about student complaints that Erica brought forward and we're gonna have to follow up on some of those pieces and make sure that we're, there were some questions around just who's the building administrator. Martin brought up some of that too with the following KL public complaint. And we are going, I'm gonna be working with Val on updating that so that we maybe put the building or site administrator, because sometimes it might be a department where a situation comes up, not so much for a student, but with the KL public complaint. And so, we'll, we'll fix that language.
Martin?
Thank you. Do I have to speak?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sure, thank you, Con. So, I just wanted to comment on the term building administrator or site administrator. And I've shared this with Con, but I wanted to bring it up in the context of my colleagues. That is, we really wanna focus, we wanna build up the importance of the principal in all of this. And I just think we need to say the word principal in our guiding documents so that's really just crystal clear to everybody. And when we use terminology like building administrator, site administrator, it's sort of, even a well-informed person like me is, it's not really clear who that is. So, if we could have language that, that says principal and we build up the role of the principal in the eyes of everybody as the person who's, you know, key to these issues and their resolution. And I understand that some places there isn't a principal or it's somebody other than the principal, and maybe there's some language where we could say principal or they're designated, something like that. So, we continue to kind of build up that central role of the principal. But that's just my question.
Good job. Martin, thank you for asking that question because I was reading this, I would have a little confused as to who the site administrator was. So, I guess for, like, say, parents that are trying to know how to file a complaint or anything like that, it can, it can be kind of confusing as to who, who gets what. My other question is, is there a way to do this online or is this all done like only at the school? Or the place, like is there, is there a way that, that this can be done?
These are posted online, so you have access to those through the policies. If you're talking about, are you talking about completing the form or are you talking about?
Yes, completing it and then sending it to whoever needs to get it.
Yes, you can send it electronically.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Erica?
And I guess I would just say to also express my comments, and the student complaint policy was just the, that I just had a question about that each school kind of has to, each school has to determine that. I was wondering if there was more of a district standard of how we take them or why there is, why we leave it up to the school inside of each one? It seems like it would be very confusing if you have students at different schools, you have to follow a different procedure. So, just having a more standard way of doing it and then communicating that to the students and the families or how they can go about putting the complaint in and just being more transparent and also more accessible.
I appreciate that feedback. I also, this was one that I took on, even though it's more in housed in offices, school performance. And one of the things that I just followed up with Dale and Travis on was just, we really, when something comes up as a former building principal, you know, you wanna handle that at the lowest level and you want, if a student brings forward a concern, you wanna hear that concern and then you wanna, or a parent brings forward a concern, you wanna handle that through a conversation and try to resolve that at a lower level. And I think part of it, that was kind of the components around that. And we also don't have an AR that has like the procedure components for that, but we may have to have further discussion around those pieces. And one of the things I wondered is, do we have a mechanism through student handbooks at the, you know, district level? I was looking through some of those and just seeing if there's a component there or through the student point of conduct, is there a mechanism there for them to share? But typically, students want to share those concerns either through the vehicle themselves or their parents with the principal or potentially with the teacher. Do you want to add anything to that, Travis?
Just sort of administratively, with as much feedback as we've gotten on these, so will this constitute a thirty-day reading and we'll pass them the consent agenda when they come up, or will we discuss these again incorporating the feedback that you've heard tonight?
I think we'll be discussing them again incorporating feedback and it could be part of, some of these may go through a consent agenda because there hasn't been questions on them, but the ones that we have had may be through a board update or through further dialogue.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else about?
Wait, Martin?
Are we onto KL public complaints?
That was where I was going next.
Oh.
Good segue.
So, I think you can go ahead for it.
I, just thank you. We had some, Con and I had a very good conversation about this earlier too, and embedded in this document, it refers to step one and step two, step three, step four, but we don't really define that within the context of this document. It really relies on you bringing that knowledge of that, at least in my, my reading. So, I don't know if we really wanna kind of have that sort of inside baseball language in here without defining it more clearly, or maybe we do, I don't know, it's just a question.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So, we also have an AR that goes with this, but we, it's not, hasn't been included in the board packet, so we could put that in a board update. So, we've worked through that and it's gone through cabinet and superintendent executive committee. So, then if you saw that, you would see how those would play together. If you were looking up a public complaint, both this policy and the AR would come up electronically for you to access. Did I answer your question, how to give you framework around those pieces?
Maybe we bring the AR next time.
Okay.
And then we see how they work together.
So, what is this, may start at step three, that's the step three in the, that's explained in the AR.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions about?
Just one last one. I think it would be great if in our next like board updates or packets that we get, we have an AR that follows the policy that we're changing, so that there's better context for us to know that maybe some questions are already being addressed there.
Yeah, I think that's great feedback.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, Travis, LGA.
I didn't receive any questions about this one. It's a consolidation of policies the way they used to be into the policies that Con has been working on, so that verbiage functionally made it into the other policies.
Thank you. All right. Elaine, I can get through here. Come on down, policy JPAB.
I have a question.
Yep, Mark?
Do we have numbers like how often do we find ourselves restraining students? Like this, I know we have a policy, like I read it, it seemed pretty clear, I think it's fine. Just wondering how often we have to do that?
So, every year, we have to submit an annual report to ODE and it's actually posted on the website. So, it's required to be posted in the top spot. So, we do calculate that at the end of the year and that's typically the number that we use and kind of divide it out and one month to get an average, but yeah, we haven't done that yet this year, but we do it in the past nine years. And I think the report right now is posted, is for last year, so I'm happy to send that to you if you like it. And if you found it off there and somebody's interested.
Or just send me the link. Martin brought this up earlier, oftentimes, our website is so dense and tremendous, oftentimes I have trouble finding.
Okay, before we move on, it has been suggested that this would be a good place to take a brief break. Does any, do you feel we want a couple minutes to go to rest? Okay, so we're gonna recess for five minutes and then we will reconvene and move on with our agenda. Sorry. Yep. Thank you. And we're gonna move along to item number seven of our agenda, the consent agenda. So, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as printed. Second.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you would like to approve the consent agenda, like Kim moved and Jackie seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say nay. The consent agenda is approved and we'll move to act item eight A, or contract for modular buildings, but Casey, not Adam.
Correct. In your packet, you have the award of the modular buildings to replace portable classrooms as part of the bond, including a five-classroom cafeteria modular building at Reedville Elementary. Also included in the packet is the design and how the layout's gonna look of these particular buildings. I think, I know that these will be significant upgrades to the educational environment, not only at Reedville, but as we replace traditional portable classrooms with more permanent modular buildings will provide a much better environment than we currently have. So, this is to award the contract for modern buildings, to get those ordered and be able to meet our project timelines late spring and into the summer. I'm more than happy to answer any questions regarding the modular buildings.
Comments, questions? Clarissa, when we make a motion, do you need us to read it in detail? There's three bullet points, then was the size, the doll?
I think in this case, on this one, you probably could say to approve the, as, sorry, as it's stated in the packet.
Would you entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we award the contract for modular buildings to modern building systems in the categories that are listed on page eighty of our board packet.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to award the contract for modular buildings. Is there any discussion?
This is super exciting.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say that, took the words right out of my mouth. I've heard such awesome things about, about these and I'm really psyched that we're gonna get this up, or get this on the ground, not off the ground.
Yeah.
It's excellent. All right, so I see no further discussion. We will go ahead and vote to award the contract for modular buildings. It's moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie. If you'd like to do that, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say nay. All right, and that motion carries. And you've also got AB, contract for elementary school. That's your range.
The next part of our contract award is for the purchase of our first phase of flexible classroom furniture. As you remember, back in the late fall, we established our furniture selection committee, had a vendor fair to look at items, then navigated through selecting particular student desks, student chairs in a couple of varieties. And we're at the point right now, we're ready to make that order for the first eleven elementary schools based on the recommendation from those committees and district staff. So, this is the award to, to the two different vendors for those products.
Excellent. Any questions for Casey? And we're looking for a motion to award that contract.
I move that we award the contract for elementary school flexible classroom furniture to the vendors listed above for targeted delivery during the months of July, August 2018 and 2019.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Erica and seconded by Mark to award the contract for elementary school flexible classroom furniture, the vendors listed in the packet during July, August 2018 and 19. Is there any discussion?
Is it really 2018 and 19? Is it 2018?
Well, it's, I guess technically go to the 2018, 19 school year.
School year, okay. I just thought it was two summers.
There'll be another purchase for the next summer, but.
Excellent.
Would it be helpful if we amended our motion?
Okay.
Sure.
I'd like to move that we amend our motion to award the contracts for elementary school flexible furniture to the vendors listed above for targeted delivery during the summer months of 2018.
Second. Okay, so we have an amended motion that has been made by Kim and seconded by Erica? Yeah, okay, cool. To award the contracts for flexible classroom furniture at the elementary schools during the summer months of 2018. If you would like to award the con, nope, Mark.
So, I, I, I might be making something really hard. Did you want it to be for the two summers? The summer of calendar year 2018 and the summer of calendar year 2019? That's how I read it.
Well, that's true, but the way that it's, the eleven schools are listed for this summer and we didn't list the eleven, the remainder for next summer, so it is. So it is the remainder of the elementary schools that we don't purchase this summer will be for the summer of 2019.
So all are confusing.
All the elementary schools will get it this summer and next summer.
All the elementary schools that are listed here will get it this summer.
The rest will be next summer.
Then I agree with Kim's amended though.
Excellent. Great, so if you would like to award the contract for elementary school flexible classroom furniture to the vendors listed in the packet for delivery during the summer months of 2018 as in the amended motion which Kim made and Erica seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say nay. Okay, that motion carries as well. Thank you, Casey.
One votes for the amendment. One votes to actually approve the amended.
Oh, so we were voting on the amended motion. Okay, great, excellent. So now we have our real motion on the table that we're going to vote on, which is not really what I said it was before. So we've approved the amended motion to award the contracts for flexible elementary school classroom furniture during, for delivery during the summer months of 2018. Now we're voting if you would like to award that contract. So if you would like to award that contract, like Kim made the motion to do and Erica seconded, then please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say nay. Okay, we just packed our box, you're going to get way better at this, I promise. Oh my gosh, okay. All right, moving right along. Item 8C, approve revisions to policy J H C with Mike.
All right, as you are aware, for the last several months, we've been discussing policy J H C. And that is student health services and requirements. The policy that goes with that. And specifically, we were asked to, by the board, to include policy language that states the problem. School-based health clinics will provide all health services in accordance with Oregon laws and the most current version of the Oregon School-Based Health Center standards for certification. So this policy with the inclusion of that language has been on 30-day review. And it's scheduled for your consideration this evening. So at this point, I recommend that you have a discussion around this and then you approve the revisions to policy J H C.
We do have two public comment cards before we discuss and vote that were submitted. So the same rules apply that I was set at the beginning of the meeting. I have three minutes, make sure you state your name. We'll start with Katie Riley and then Bobby Wolf. Come on down. Katie Riley?
Hi, I'm Katie Riley, I live in Hillsborough. Can people hear me? Okay. So I am a grandparent. I do have two children, two grandchildren who live in the district. I'm also retired from, as a faculty member of the Department of Public Health and Preventive Medicine at OHSU. And it's kind of in that perspective that I'm speaking tonight. I would urge you to pass this policy and to provide the opportunity for students to obtain contraceptives. As we know, there are many kids who are sexually active. Many times, they do not receive instruction about what the consequences are of being sexually active. However, they do know about contraceptives and about the ability to obtain at least the most rudimentary of those contraceptives, which is often prophylactic. I understand that you would not be allowing contraception in terms of dispensing pills and that kind of thing. But even to have the most rudimentary prevention objects that they could use would be definitely to the advantage of children. As we heard earlier about school safety, this also provides a model of safety for our students so that they can make choices regarding keeping themselves safe from having an untoward pregnancy that would affect their lives permanently. This is really important. The average age of sexual intercourse throughout the world is 14. And we do know that many kids within our school district are sexually active. Why not provide them with the facility to help themselves prevent a pregnancy that would ruin their lives, that their bodies would not be prepared for? Their bodies are not ready for having children until a labor age. So this is something that I urge you to go ahead and to enhance. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you say Bobby Wolf? Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Bobby Wolf and I also live in Hillsborough. And what Katie said counts too. It's so important that we give our students the opportunity to grow and to be able to make good decisions without having a two-year-old sitting on their hip. It's just very, very important because they are our future. These kids that are in high school now are our future. You know, I'm at the age where I'm beginning to think about assisted living and caregivers. Not that I'm going to need them next week, but probably. And you guys are all going to get there too. So we want our kids to be in the best position they can be in, to be healthy mentally and physically, make good decisions, so they can take care of us. It's just important to us, all of us in our communities. And I hope that you all agree to vote for this change in the policy. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the public comment that we have for this evening. So we are looking for a motion to approve policy J H C.
I move that we approve the revisions to policy J H C, student health services and requirements.
I second.
So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Martin to approve the revisions to policy J H C. Is there any discussion?
As an employee at British University Memorial Health Center, I have a potential conflict of interest in this matter. So I'm going to refrain from the discussion and voting in on this issue.
I just wanted to thank community members. We've heard from lots of people, not only in the room at meetings, but received a plethora of emails. And I was surprised, the percentage of emails that just go around that were supportive of this. And so have personally thought about it a lot. And I can't think of another partner that we work with in the school district that we would encourage them to break Oregon State law. And that's just the place I kept coming back to in this decision. I can't think of any other organization we work with. And there are lots of partner organizations who step onto our grounds and use facilities. And that's where I'm landing, why I would be supportive of this change.
Erica?
I also just want to state that I was very just thankful for the community that came out and spoke. And specifically with students that were so brave to come out and speak. It's very daunting to stand up in a room full of adults and state their opinion and tell you what they need. And I felt that that was just so brave of them to do. I also just want to advocate that there's opportunities also for the community members that are still uneasy about the decision to come in and take it toward the facility, to ask for information. They are very open and they're also very transparent with everything. And Martin has a, also a great resource that we have, that standards for certification has a lot of really good information. So I want to make sure that we have that available for our community members.
Any other discussion? I do think that throughout the process, there has been a little bit of misunderstanding about what we're actually talking about. So I do think that it's important for folks who are confused to make sure that they read the policy, policy J H C. And then maybe also reference the Oregon State law, which is very clear. And I definitely agree with what Kim said that I hadn't thought about it in that way, but clearly it would have been pretty inappropriate not being compliant with the law. So I probably know no surprise, but I'm very happy to support this. And I'm very hopeful that we will, as opposed, enact this policy. Seeing no further discussion, we are now going to vote to approve revisions to policy J H C, student health services and requirements, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Martin. So if you would like to approve the revisions to policy J H C, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say nay. And then Director Martin has his abstain from this vote. Thank you. All right, let's move right along to item 8D, adopt resolution to admit non-resident students with Beth.
Okay, well, I provided some information about this at a prior board meeting. And since that time, have allowed our administrators to take a look at some draft locations and numbers of openings. And they had a chance to weigh in and give you some edits, and those were made. And then I believe you were provided a copy of the list of where those openings could be. And if you're okay with those, then we will go ahead and get those posted to the district website along with the forms that folks would need to fill out by Thursday, which is the state required deadline.
Excellent, any questions for Beth? So then we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution and we do have to read it, I think. Right, come on, yes.
I move that we adopt the following resolution. The Hillsborough School District 1J Board of Directors hereby resolves to admit non-resident students for the 2018-19 school year under the provisions of Oregon HB 3681. The board further directs administration to determine and announce the number and location of available transfer slots and to devise an equitable process by which students will be selected for the slots.
It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim to adopt the resolution, which Jackie read. Any discussion? Director, please say second time. All right, so if you would like to adopt the resolution, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say nay. Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Ben. Moving right along, the Northwest Regional E S D Local Service Plan, Mike.
As we talked about last month in the work session, we were required by March 1st to adopt the service plan for the Northwest Regional E S D Event Service Plan. It's one that would take place during the 2018-19 school year. And specifically, that service plan spells out the programs that would be available for students with special needs. It spells out the technology support that Northwest Regional E S D provides to component school districts, as well as the school improvement services. Also spells out the administrative support services that take place. As you, as I reported a month or so ago, we had been putting into the plan that we feel very comfortable with the components in the plan. We continue to be very well aligned with the work that the Northwest Regional E S D is doing. It aligns well with the goals that we're trying to advance as well. So at this point, I recommend that you adopt the resolution, approving the Northwest Regional E S D Service Plan.
Any questions, Mike? All right, we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution, approving the Northwest Regional E S D Local Service Plan.
I move that we adopt the resolution as moving the Northwest Regional E S D Local Service Plan for the year 2018-19. The balance of the Northwest Regional E S D State School Fund that is currently due to Hillsborough School District for the 18-19 school year will be received in cash after services have been received and charged to the district.
So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica to adopt the resolution approving the Northwest Regional E S D Local Service Plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll be voting to adopt the resolution, approving the Northwest Regional E S D Local Service Plan, as moved by Kim and seconded by Erica. If you would like to do that, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say nay. The resolution is adopted. Moving right along, we are at item number nine, H C and H T A. Welcome to, on duty. Oh, of course.
Good evening. I want to start by saying how excited we are to actually start negotiations on the new contract. There's always room for improvement and we are looking forward to working together with the district team to dig into the issues. It is our hope that we craft a contract that can be, be a tool to encourage our valuable employees to stay with H S D and to attract new people to help complete our mission to ensure the success of all students. One issue that is tough to negotiate our way out of is the high number of unfilled substitute jobs. It was recently said in the license negotiation that there is 98% fill rate for subs. While that statistic may be true for the higher-paid licensed subs, our experience as classified staff is completely different. From our perspective, we have a crisis on our hands that needs to be addressed. We recently realized that the district only has three substitute custodians, that some school kitchens have been told to not even bother asking for a sub, that office staff at transportation, including mechanics, routers, managers, are still driving regular bus routes. This is some of the lowest paid work despite the fact that this work is critical to the success of our schools. You can't teach students who don't have a bus to take them to school. You can't teach in a filthy classroom. Kids can't learn when they don't have breakfast or lunch. When a classified employee is out and they don't have a sub, buildings just have to make do with the staff that they had for that day. For custodians, this means working double shifts and racking up massive amounts of overtime to make sure that our buildings are ready for students each day. The crisis is one that a strong economy created, but a previous school board made a decision that made this crisis worse. In an attempt to reduce costs, the district outsourced the recruitment of management of subs to a newly formed local company. While we won't address the rumors of underhanded practices made by this company, we will speak to the services that they provide. Simply put, it sucks. New subs are not being recruited and this company seems to be ignoring classified subs in lieu of higher-priced, easier-to-fill licensed sub jobs. We ask that you, the board, take some time to review our agreement with this company and consider alternatives. We don't represent those folks, so their only advocate in this agreement is you. They're elected leaders. Please work to end this crisis for our employees so our employees can take a sick day without overloading their coworkers with extra work. Thank you.
Hi, Jill Galley, National Education Association President. And I wanted to welcome Yedira to the school board. We look forward to getting to know you and we'll be reaching out to you to pick you up for coffee and just to connect with you. As you can see, I'm a little under the weather. And speaking of weather. You know, we had a half-day off last week from weather and then a full day on Wednesday and a late start on Thursday. But I know my fellow teachers, just like the school board, they're planners. And I'm sure that they took the opportunity to grade papers and intergrades when they were homebound because of the hazardous road conditions. I say we're planners because, you know, I was upstairs and we talked about the two-year calendar. And obviously, we plan ahead. You could even say that we plan ahead for inclement weather. We do this by, when we look at the state's minimum requirement of seat time minutes. We look at that as a floor, not a ceiling. So we buffer in, the district buffers in additional minutes at all grade levels, which allow us to accommodate for unexpected school closures, late starts or early release. And like I said, our teachers are amazing. They're highly qualified. And I know many shared with me that they've already looked at compacting the curriculum to make up the instructional time that was lost and some have already done that, so. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about that our students are always, as teachers, the wellbeing of our students are always our focus and our number one priority. the well-being of our students are always our focus and our number-one priority. And our hearts go out to our fellow teachers in Florida and the students that they serve and served. You know, each year, the students in our classrooms, they quickly become just as important as our own children in our own homes. They become our children. And in today's times, it is really unfortunate that we do not solely focus on students' learning and academics. The stress level of America's teachers, you know, continues to rise. And we teachers here at Hillsborough, we appreciate the training and around trauma-informed care and the supports such as the wellness rooms for students that are at risk. And we just want to ask for that continued support around professional development and trainings that are offered to help students in need, as well as provide opportunities for teachers to access what they need, remain well, and cope with the demanding needs their job continues to require. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will keep my brief. Wanted to talk about every Thursday I have the opportunity to do with facilities and to get caught up on the work that is happening with the bond to make decisions regarding the work moving forward. So spend about four hours a week on that project. And it is just exciting to be able to do that type of work and to see the work that we've done to put ourselves in such a good position to move forward quickly. There were a number of districts that were able to pass laws in November, but the amount of work that we've done in advance allows us to move forward pretty quickly and to put ourselves in a very favorable position. So kudos to Adam and his team over there who continue to do great work. Kate's part of that team as well, and really position ourselves well to move forward. I thought it was awesome that we had the opportunity to thank one of our partners, City Hillsborough, one of our strongest partners, and to have Tamara Suzie here to be able to thank him for his efforts. I think that just highlights the great partnership that we have with the city and the investment that those partners have in our students. Lastly, I'd like to just mention the Hillsborough Schools Foundation event that we had on Saturday night. And speaking of great partners, that is a group that contains a wide variety of people, and their only agenda with their work, in their work with the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, is to help our students, to stand in the gap when we don't have funding necessary to do with what our teachers and our students deserve. And they just continue to amaze me with the amount of work that they put in and the efforts that they make on behalf of our students. So just wanted to thank them publicly for the great event that they put on Saturday night and for all of the fundraising efforts that they put forward. Thank you.
What did you think? Can I just start with Jackie?
I wanted... Well, Nadira, thanks to have you here. And along with what Mike said about the school foundation auction, it was a wonderful event, and I'm looking forward to next year and to see what Mike wears. If you missed it, it was a gold pomade laser. Sorry. It's all better if you want. Find a picture.
So I am really enjoying being a member of the negotiating team for the Hillsborough School District, and it is a pleasure on the license side to meet Jill and her colleagues in the association. There's a lot of good energy and real passion for education, and I'm thoroughly enjoying that, being a part of that. Unfortunately, I will miss the next meeting, which is the 19th of March, and Jackie's boss, my colleague, is going to fill in for me, so Connor knows that. Just want to share that with my colleagues, that Jackie's going to be on the team there for that session, and I really appreciate that. And yeah, the gala was so much fun. It just really was nice to see the community come together, just to characterize, all three former mayors, you know, the mayor and two former mayors were there, just to characterize the level of support. It was just fun, and it was awesome, and good things happened there that night. Sort of on the flip side of that, our school resource officer alluded to the tragedy in Florida, and that's weighing, I think, on all of our minds. Frankly, I don't know what to do about that, you know, as a board member, as somebody who cares about kids and educational safety. I just struggle with that. And so I don't really know how to process that, you know, prayer and action in some form. And so maybe I would just challenge our colleagues in this district to think about what we need to be doing and then bring that back to this body and act on it. I know the bond probably has some opportunity. I've talked to Adam. Maybe there's... We know in the video that we'll use for marketing, the bond was school safety and security, particularly entrances, channeling into one entrance. And maybe we can rethink that to even be more, although I'm not sure it would have worked even for the Florida scenario, as it was a student who knew the drill. So we all struggle with that, and so I'm still working through it. Thanks for letting me just vocalize that for a few minutes this evening. But back on a positive note, it was really fun at the gala. So look forward to next year and raising some more money for our kids.
Erica? Last thing I have to add today, to thank you. Now that we have mentioned the gala and how exciting it is to have so much support in our community and this, knowing that is really rewarding and being there. I am participating in their reading part at Rebuild the Tree on Friday, so I will be doing that. I haven't decided what book to read, but I will continue on. And I think that's it for me.
Yes, welcome, Nadira. Looking forward to working with you and getting to know you. Gala was awesome. For anybody who wants to attend next year, anybody can, and bring your checkbook. The upside, Mike has told me an email I can borrow that Jackie didn't have.
All right.
I'm not sure it would fit.
Our next meeting is March 13.
Bring your sunglasses.
I also want to take a second to mention one of our teachers at Centri, Jeff Gower, has been nominated for the Life Changer of the Year Award. And I've known Jeff for maybe 10 or 12 years in my private life. He often solicited contributions from my company for various sporting activities that he was coaching at the time. So he's known for giving his time to help kids, and I think over the time I've known him, he's coached baseball, assistant basketball, golf, I think something else. So I was always happy to help him out when he asked, and so glad to see him being recognized for those efforts.
This is my first board meeting, and I've learned so much today. And then go home and process all this, and I'm sure I'll have a lot of questions. So if I'm calling y'all here and asking a lot of questions, that's going to be coming. So again, excited to be on the school board, and I can't wait to be up to speed. Where you guys are at is, you all are so impressive.
My laundry is just longer, I'm sorry. I'm going to pull the jeans on then.
She wouldn't have said that.
One is the Glencoe Robotics Road Excess on Thursday night, and Mr. Steiner wanted to make sure that everyone in the office board knew that they were invited to attend. It's at Glencoe High School in the cafeteria from 6:00 to 8:30. Normally, the presentation's normally on the front end, and you don't have to... It is a fundraiser that you can purchase a ticket for. It's like, that sort of thing, but really the presentation part is on the front end if you'd like to participate. I have a connection through work to someone on faculty in Parkland. And so we had asked, what is something we can do? We've often, as a board, sent notes to other school boards in times of tragedy. One thing that they asked for were posters, messages of love that could be hung in the building as people return and as life continues. And so maybe that's something we could do in our next work session, is create something that we could all add on to and send along. The school foundation auction was amazing. In five minutes, they raised enough money to fund all of their innovation grants in the next grant cycle. It was amazing to see the progress that they have made over the years and how quickly that has changed from a little ask to all the grants in one year. A board member asked me about the event conference this summer. I am so sorry that I planned an exhibit family vacation with six families and did not check the date of that before I scheduled that. I have all three attending, but it is something I would encourage people to attend regardless. It's not meant only for brand-new board members, and so don't see my lack of attendance as my lack of interest or that I don't buy that. And my last one is for Mike. I would love if a staff member could follow up with Ms. Odell, who was one of the public testimony, to find out where she goes to school and root back into her concerns. It was an opportunity to do that during her time, but I'd like her to have a feedback group about where to go and who to work with in her building. That's it. Oh, and I'll be reading Black Lives Matter first, but continuing the tradition, all of us. She can wrap her hand in books.
That's right.
It is right.
I'm reading too, so just say. My children got a private Janine Solomon help reading for Christmas reading this year, so she's a little famous around the Allen House. So I was going to say the same thing without following up with Ms. Odell, so thanks for adding that to your list. There's a benefit and a detriment between the last ones we've taught. The social foundation gala was amazing. As you've already heard, it's so overwhelming the support in the room and the passion for the group. It's great to be a part of something bigger like that around people who are so excited that, you know, "Oh, you're on the floor," and they actually think that's right. That doesn't really happen, so it's great. And then I think the other thing I would say is to Casey and to Mike, in the summertime, when the flexible classroom furniture gets, you know, delivered, installed in the elementary school classrooms, I think that would be a great opportunity for a good trip to test it out and, you know, have a nice relaxing time. That was my idea about that. I think that's all that I have on my list for this evening. So our next meeting is in March, and we have one meeting in March, and that's on March 13. And don't forget, you're not going to be, because we're going to take our main board. Okay, all right, so we'll adjourn our meetings.